Testing, 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 testing.
Teacher and never not have one later. So, yep.
Andrew, can you get Sam's attention? Sam?
Karen.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Graham County Monday, July tenth, two thousand twenty-three Board of Commissioners meeting. If we could now have Commissioners Lourdes J with her invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Would you bow with me, please? Once more again, our heavenly Father, Lord, we've come with thankful heart. Thank you for the minute blessing that you've stored upon us this day. Lord, let's bless each board member, one by one. Lord, bless the family. Lord, bless all of us that are understanding my voice, whatever problem we're going through or coming out of, Lord. Just continue to throw your arms around us from Texas and guide us. Bless our law enforcement service, Lord. Bless our nurses and doctors, Lord, in Graham County here. Lord, that they might keep on doing what's best for Graham County. Lord, as we go through this meeting, search our hearts and minds that we would do what's right. We would do what's right for the businesses that is pleasing for the county and better for the county and pleasing in your sight. Lord, go with us as we stand by us and take care of us, Lord. Lord, bless the ones in Walter unconscious. Bless our soldiers all over land and country, Lord. Touch the hearts of mankind all over the world, Lord. Where there's hatred and disruption, Lord, just touch them. Give them more love, more understanding for all. Now go with us and stand by us and take care of us. These blessed we act in thy name. Amen.
Would you stand with me, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Prior to going into our meeting, we're gonna have a few comments about the Fourth of July and its significance by board members. I'll be starting that. And from that, I'll begin reading from our Declaration of Independence. The unanimous declaration of thirteen United States of America. When in course of human events it becomes necessary for one people dissolve the political bands which connected them with another, and to assume among the powers of the earth a separate and equal station to which the laws of nature and of nature's God entitle them, a decent respect to opinions of mankind require that they should declare the causes which impel them to the separation. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain enabled rights, that among these are life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. In the last paragraph of our declaration, we therefore, the representatives of the United States of America and General Congress, assemble appealing to the Supreme Judge of the world for the rectitude of our intentions due and the name and authority by the good people of these colonies, solemnly publish and declare that these United Colonies are and of right ought to be free and independent states, that they are absolved from the allegiance to the British Crown, that all political connection between them and the state of Britain, Great Britain, is and ought to be totally dissolved, and that as a free and independent states, that they have full power to levy war, conclude peace, contract alliances, establish commerce, and to do all other acts of things which independent states may of right do. And for the support of the declaration, with a firm reliance on the protection of divine providence, we mutually... With a firm reliance on the protection of divine providence, we mutually pledge to each other our lives, our fortunes, and our sacred honor. After reading our declaration again, I was reminded that freedom's not free. An author, P. McCray Thornton, wrote, "For those who have fought for it, freedom has a flavor the protected will never know." The cost of freedom requires great sacrifice. Five sinners were captured by the British traders and tortured before they died. Twelve had their homes ransacked and burned, two lost their sons in the Revolutionary Army, another had two sons captured, nine of the fifty-six fought and died from wounds and hardships of a Revolutionary War. Many lost their land and wealth. That was obtained by me through a historical data. I hope each of you take the time, or took the time this past week, to think about the greatness of our land and the sacrifices of those who have sacrificed on our behalf, so we can enjoy our freedom and the liberties our great country provides to us all. Having lived and served abroad, I can attest there's no greater nation. We are exceptional, and still the envy of the world. We're not perfect. We have and will continue to work to improve our great union, but we are truly blessed to live in America and to be called Americans. Finally, I am thankful for our forefathers' faith in God and having the trust in Him to guide them in forming one nation under God. In God we trust. Any other commissioners like to provide any comments regarding July Fourth, this past July Fourth?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, as I listen to you and as I reflect it, on the pledge laid by Commissioner J tonight, in my schooling and starting down at Holly and then going to Angi B Duke, each morning we stood and said that pledge. I must admit to you that as a young kid, I probably didn't understand the significance. But as I've gotten older, what great love and respect I have for this country, for all of those who have made it what it is, and for me personally, it has truly been a land of opportunity. So with all the things that we continue to work through, I'm grateful for the democracy that we have, that we can work together, we can reason together. God bless the United States of America.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, in tonight's preparation for tonight's meeting, I reread the Frederick Douglass speech of eighteen fifty-two given in Rochester, New York, and I was moved to think about how in the Constitution, we're free-born Americans, and some classes were not necessarily considered so. And I grew up not ninety miles from that, where that historic speech was given in Rochester, New York. But it brings me to two thousand twenty-three and the new America that we face, social media. And I think of our Lieutenant Governor, Mark Robinson, in a speech over the holiday weekend. Whether you're talking about Agath Hitler, whether you're talking about Chairman Mao, whether you're talking about Stalin, whether you're talking about Pol Pot, whether you're talking about Fidel Castro in Cuba, whether you're talking about a dozen other despots around the globe, it is time for us to get back to start reading some of those quotes. And this is where it ended in the media. It is time for us to start teaching our children some of those quotes. It's time for us to start teaching our children about the dirty, despot, awful things that those communist socials and despots of our history have come to say. You know, it was misquoted of our Lieutenant Governor recently, this holiday weekend, about him believing in those things that are the despots of our history, when in actuality he was calling them out to say, we should study history, to say that we are Americans. We have no national religion. We are Christian-based, but we welcome those of other faiths. We welcome those of other nationalities. I personally am a mutt. I have a hard time tracing my lineage back to the colonial times. I do know that I have some historical ancestry in this nation, but most of my people came after that, circling a better, searching a better life in one nation under God.
Thank you. Any other comments from any other commissioners? Thank you, commissioners, for your comments tonight, and we'll move on to our business now. It's a consent agenda. I just got one comment before we go into the consent agenda. County Manager, if we could, under the surplus vehicles in the future, if you could have Mr. McNally place in there the mileage and the condition of the vehicle, whether it's poor, fair, good, whatever is applicable. I think that would further the process. At this time, commissioners, if there's any other questions about the consent agenda, do I have a motion?
Before you go to the most, with Chairman.
I think our mileage went down. I was looking at the data, I was saying, I was looking through it, and I said, what mileage did we come here? I think we're on, like, a twenty fifteen, and I wonder what mileage was on.
Exactly.
But we could get the mileage off.
Do we have a motion for the consent agenda? Who accepts the consent agenda? Commissioners Lourdes J, for a second. Commissioner Jimmy Gooch. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next one is introduction and recognition presentations, and Ms. Hinman, this is yours, ma'am. This is recognized Vivian Oney for her volunteer service.
Vivian, could you join me up next, please? And we have so many volunteers to do such an awesome job for the people of Graham County, and I could not do it without them. And Vivian is the volunteer. You know. Recently received the governor's report for volunteerism for the entire county. I see family members from our Eastern Star chapter, I see family members from our church and other churches that work with us. So there's a lot of people out here to tell you, we love you and thank you for all you do. So now I get the fun part, the where is, and the where as, and the whatever. So proclamation and recognition and appreciation for Vivian Oney. Whereas the words loyalty, trustworthy, reliable, hardworking, and self-discipline are just a few of the words to describe the else-candy strength of a solid, I don't even know what that means, volunteer. But these are the exact words that summarize the character of Vivian Oney, for caring nature and steadfast spirit that has been unshakable in her work for ACIM. And whereas, since nineteen eighty-five, the mission's focus of non-profit organization, area congregation and ministry, ACIM, has been a welfare of a community, but in twenty-twenty, COVID-nineteen, since that made clear, and unimaginable challenges. However, contributors, people's contributions gave state money. But in addition, and support for ACIM rose to the challenge, and with the generous contributions and ACIM was glad to already have Vivian Oney on board. And whereas Vivian made herself a point of task to ensure all contributors and supporters knew how much her kindness and appreciation, even down to her personally buying stamps, stuffing in the envelopes, and dedication she sent to them letters and thanked them for their nonsense, to assure them that their donations were helping and with food and security that others was uncheated and, whereas Vivian's simple gesture of cheeky hand, one day to help and a time of need, turned his post pad over to strangers. She pushed to make service with the contribution, and the supporters were acknowledged, no doubt, helped keep the donations coming into ACIM, because of the cheering, it showed to guilt, appreciated. Vivian was to let them know, took ACIM's four keys. And now, and therefore, Vivian proclaimed that Graham County Commissioners will be indebted to gratitude and respect and appreciation, being recognition, that's the word, that's the word, that's the word. Vivian Oney for her tireless ability to service to the area congregation and ministry, ACIM, and to the people of Graham County, this is the tenth A of the Y, plain supporting community. And you all do not know how much we break and appreciate that, because every single other she wants. She makes a difference, giving more money to the community, to help more people. So thank you, thank you. I have more thanks for you. I do. But you know, and you can talk. I lived in Graham County in nineteen ninety-three, my husband, and I've always thought of living at home, you know, when I come to the state. We moved to Raleigh in nineteen sixty-five, so I've been here longer than ever, but I always thought that it was my duty to help with anything that I can help with. And so, Nancy Lee and I started way back, sort of close, when you had that little boy down behind the church, remember that?
God park.
Yeah, the God park. And then I was a receptionist at the senior center for three years, and the receptionist said, you've been home to the area shelter for five years. So you may have come in contact with the mayor, just so I had that to be familiar with. And now that we're doing that, she worked for a company called I V M. And so she said she did volunteering for this place, that she was able to give, some of their supplies, such as computers and printers and things like that. All very first computers came from, that's again, to the grant given. So she has done awful lots for ACIM. I'm our board members, I'm sorry, Ms. Eglion, our board members. John Chucky said he would like to be, wanted to be here tonight, but he had to leave as Lordy, oh, he herself, so he did not be here. So here's your plaque, and the box that goes with it, so if you want. Okay, one more. And it's everything I read except for the Miss Sullivan type stuff. Never really been wrong, but rest may, rest of our chairman this year. Thank you very much. This is the coin. Oh, okay. And you also have a book that we have. By the way, I think books are still down at the county office, and you too may have your very own book for a price of twenty-five.
Well, that may be pretty small, yeah.
Fifty? Fifty? Oh, fifty, they say. I thought it was fifty.
That's a gift that keeps on giving, isn't it?
Twenty, twenty years before the nation. Vivian has stood with Lewisburg, so she goes still back to South Florida, and still works for ACIM, and still goes through her and still.
Just as a point, Graham County was formed in fourteen, seventeen forty-six, twenty years before the nation of the United States of America. So we're older than the United States of America. Just get a book.
Yeah.
I'll take one for twenty-five.
You'll take one for twenty-five? Let me see what I can do about that.
Yeah.
Okay.
We finally got to push the button.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chair and County Commissioners, first of all, let me tell you how delighted and how big my head was at my retirement, when you gave me all of those affirmations from the county, and whereas, and these, and those. I just was overwhelmed. I was hippopotamus happy and elephantally excited that you would do that for me, and thank you so very much for your kindness, and also, there were gifts involved, and I really appreciate that, sir. This evening, as the Chair for the Juvenile County Provincial Council, and Ms. Oney will be contacting you at tomorrow's here, the executive summary is before you, and you can see in other parts that we funded the same organizations as we did last year. They demonstrated very extreme work. They demonstrated some successes, but most of all, they had the care and concern of our youth as their main standard, and that is why we funded them for this year. Also, we have the roster here as well, and are there any comments or discussion that you would like to have, sir?
Board, have any questions for Mr. Kunde, Chair? I do.
All right.
How many SRO referrals did you receive last year?
All right. Commissioner, I'm not sure we're fair to answer that specific question. I think it's fair to say that we already have a very low percentage of public schools. Okay. The SROs increased last year, we know that, because of the network that was put together with the sheriff's office as well as the school system. So we have increased last year, and we were very happy to have that information. We will get you an exact figure to the letter.
How many referrals did you receive from the Graham County Public Schools?
Graham County Public Schools was approximately forty referrals. And I'm using that figure because I'm adding the ones that we found out about later through through our meetings, and that's how we get it, through our reports from the different agencies that we serve.
Are there any areas in the referral process that need to be improved?
We worked on that very diligently, and we were able to improve them. The idea that I wanted to happen, I wanted referrals to be a lot faster, and how they got the information, how they replaced, and how they reported back that they were in there. That increased, that was improved, we want to work on that some more. We were able to work on that by having, by actually filling out vacancies on our council. That allowed us to have people working on certain areas. As a matter of fact, the county school board sent Dr. Northley. Dr. Northley then charged her social workers to get moving faster, and send referrals to different places. As that happened, the result of that was SROs in the school system began to refer faster and to follow up, and the social workers began to refer faster, and the social workers developed a good relationship, working relationship with court counselors.
Did you have any assistance, or are you happy with your assistance you received from Vaya?
I'm still working through that. By working through that, I mean that it is new to us to actually have challenges of drug substance abuse and challenges of mental health. So we're working through that, and I'm actually pleased. I'm pleased because we have certain programs that, like village programs, that actually go into the homes and do psychological assessments of students. And we're finding out new information about how students are feeling about news of being, of children being shot every day, how students are feeling about what's their role, can they do anything about what's going on. And so, Vaya, we're gonna pick up, working with them, as well as the school social workers, as well as the village program.
Thank you, Ms. Kunde. I'll close my questions with remarks, and that I'm hoping that we can see more referrals from both the SROs and Graham County Public Schools, in addition to working with Vaya on collecting the low-hanging fruit, that we can get more mental health and treatment and substance abuse awareness type of activities ongoing within our schools, from available resources that are there. So thank you for all the hard work you and Mr. Cruz do on your board, it's much appreciated. And your recommendation, the budget, is that the county has already approved their county budget, which we did match your funds.
Thank you.
So based on that, with the hopes that we will see, from the discussion we had, and board can correct me if I'm wrong, that we will see more referrals, robust referrals, coming in that focuses on our children, with the greatest needs, or the places that houses our children with the greatest needs are our schools, and that we have a great opportunity to mine those children, and from that environment, working with our schools and our school officials and school boards and so forth, which we have a good relationship with. So thank you very much. And also, Board, the recommendation is that we accept the proposed budget, which we did during our budget year, County Manager, I'm correct on that. And then we're also, there's a specified list here, I'll read to you. Mr. Leroy Anderson for District One, Alex Funville, District Two, Elliot Carver, District Three, Dr. Kunde, District Four, Jessica Laws out of District Five, my district, Eduardo Sosa, District Six, and there is a vacancy in District Seven, which I know that unless otherwise, Mr. Gooch is working to fill. I'm also gonna make the recommendation to the night, to the Board, that I will need a vote on at this time, is to bring aboard the new Police Chief of Creedmore, Chief Troy Willis. I know that initially he came, but he's had to take some time to get his feet underneath him, and I'd like to see him on the board, representing the city of Creedmore. Is there any, do you have a motion for that?
Mr. Chairman, I enthusiastically make that motion, and may I just say, special thanks to the leadership. What a special time to have this type of service, and we appreciate all you do to be able to work with our young people. Thank you so much. I'll make that as a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'll second.
I'll third.
He took Chief King's place.
He took Chief King's place on the board.
No, he has, yeah, exactly. He has to be brought on the board. Yep. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second. He has to be brought on board separately.
Oh, okay, okay. I just thought you, okay, I thought you went on in advance. Okay, don't sound.
That's okay. First by Commissioner Cozart, second by Mr. Williford. All in favor?
Aye.
And that also includes... And then, and that also includes, uh, let me, excuse me?
Discussion.
Yeah, discussion.
So just a point for 4H. Um, as a representative for Cooperative Extension, I know that, uh, 4H and the Community Services Team with, with that organization has a significant port, portion of the, um, JCPC, um, with, um, the, uh, court, uh, He Matters, She Matters, and the, the JCPC with the courts. Um, just want to make sure that the public is aware that this is a, a quarter of a million-dollar, um, entity, and that the county puts in about thirty thousand dollars. Uh, most of that portion has come through the, um, 4H Best, which encompasses those, um, JCPC programs such as 4H Best, He Matters, and, um, She Matters programs. So just a, a shout-out to our 4H programs and Cooperative Extension with Clarissa Purrier as our Executive Director there. I think she does a fantastic job, uh, as y'all do, um, but just wanted to make sure that I put a plug in for Cooperative Extension on this matter.
Very good homework, Mr. Commissioner.
Uh, I do want to also thank Mr. Cruz for his tireless work with our, our, our group. Uh, he's, um, they would, uh, they really, he's a valuable resource, and we appreciate it. I want to go back to the recommendation, uh, and I need a motion on, um, it, it, we got the proposed budget, but it's a Granville County JCPC funding plan, so we've approved the money, but now we need to approve their plan and the specified member list that is listed here, uh, the members that I called out earlier from the district. So if I could have, we, we have voted to put Chief, uh, Willis in place. Now we need to vote on the voting plan, or excuse me, the, but, the plan, the plan and the voting, the members that are already listed here.
I'll make that motion, sir.
Second. Ms. Himmern is second by Commissioner Jay. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're now going to move, oh, thank you very much.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you. You really have anything else, Dr. Kunde?
No, sir. Thank you for your support, and we will hope that the community will be involved, you too, in referring students, you know, are difficult, and many faces driven out, uh, justice system. You can refer them to, to the academy, and we will immediately get on that and get to the place where they need to be. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. It's a good program, very good program. Um, okay, now we'll move to public comments. We have fourteen people, I think, signed up. The comments only go for thirty minutes. It's three minutes per person. You will see a yellow card when you get to two and a half minutes, then you will come across a red card. That's when we ask that you stop speaking. We will stop the public comments at thirty minutes. You may allot your time to someone else to carry your time as you wish, and all those that were signed up at the beginning of the meeting, we will do our very best to get you in and have you heard. Um, when you, uh, come to the podium, please just address your name and your address, and we'll start with Mr. Paul Blalock.
Hope everybody's doing well today. Um, I'm Paul Blalock, fifteen ninety-three Tallyhoe Road near STEM. Uh, back in March of, um, this year, I got a letter from the Cartar Regional Council of Government, uh, telling about a public information meeting at the STEM Fire Department, which I attended, and, um, it was about the, um, STEM ETJ. And, um, at that night, I asked, um, who gets to make that final decision as to whether that ETJ will pass or not? And the answer to that is it'll be in your hands, you know, at the time that it be presented to y'all. And, um, that was in March, and so I've been here, uh, this is my fifth month coming to talk to you, and I apologize for being, uh, I guess, repeating myself and on a, on a lot of different, um, objections that I have to the ETJ. But, um, when I came in tonight, uh, nobody had signed up, and so I don't want to take a lot of time. I see that a lot of people did come in and sign up. I would just like to state that, um, I am definitely opposed to this STEM ETJ, and I will appreciate it when it does come before you, that you will vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next, if you would, for the sake of time, hold your applause to the very end. Uh, that'd be the very last speaker, uh, then you, you may applaud, but for time purposes, thank you very much. Mark Tilly, please.
Good evening, sir. I'm Mark Tilly on sixteen oh-one Tallyhoe Road, and here to express my voice on, uh, we oppose the ETJ. Uh, if you go at that, where the ETJ is established at, I haven't spoken to no one yet that wants that, and I hope y'all take this into consideration, that, um, there's people who've lived there for generations that don't want this, and there's people that's been there just a few years that, that has tried to get away from their city life, and we just oppose all the, that, that, that comes with it, and, um, I just hope y'all put that into consideration.
Thank you, sir.
I know it's out of, out of quorum, but can I ask you a question? What's a KIC?
Keep the country.
Keep the country, okay. Thank you. Okay, there's like six, maybe seven? Okay, thank you. Eight.
Nathan Ford. Can I pronounce your name correctly, sir? Okay.
I live at three-two-five-seven, uh, Tom Wilkins Road. I want to stay in theme tonight with the, uh, Fourth of July. My hand trembles, but my heart does not. Stephen Hopkins, signer to the Declaration of Independence from Rhode Island. What if you were told that when it comes to the STEM ETJ, that there is a crisis of trust? I yield my time.
Thank you. Tim Hosford.
I live at fifteen eighty-two Easy Street, and, you know, I've been helping, uh, against this ETJ, and I've talked to numerous, numerous people that have no idea what it's all about. They've seen the signs, but they're clueless, and that's how I feel. A lot of the people around STEM are clueless because nobody ever told me what it actually meant. That's all I got to say.
Sir, did you get a public notice? Did you get a public notice?
Uh, yes.
On your ETJ? Do you know that any of those people that are within the public notice that you're talking about didn't know about it?
Yeah.
So you know a people? Okay. All right, I'm just asking.
And, and the, and the file that we got, you couldn't, you couldn't even see what the map was all about.
Okay. Thank you very much. Laurie, Laurie Spurle.
I live at sixteen ninety-five, I'm in on Springs Road in STEM, and I just wanted to let y'all, thank y'all first for letting us have this three minutes, but I'm not the Speaker, I'm not the one to get up and everything, but this has really brought a lot of attention to me as far as, as where we live, we're right smack in the middle of the zone that they're wanting to reload, rezone and do the ETJ, and I think that STEM has done a bad, a poor job at letting all the residents know and keep them informed ahead of time. Things that we know, I've just learned a lot of this in the last couple of months, and that don't really give anybody, any of us, time to really get everything together to speak against it, and I just don't think that the residents of STEM has had the adequate amount of time to get their stuff together and understand what ETJ is really all about and understand why come, you know, that they won't even present it. I mean, I've heard, I've been sitting here listening to how y'all do everything, and y'all are so informed about it, and y'all really search everything, and, you know, I'm thankful that y'all are listening to us and giving us opportunity to speak, but I really feel like we didn't really have enough time to really, you know, understand it. I have it anyway, and I'd just like to say that I'm totally opposed of it, and I hope that y'all will stand with us and vote against it.
Thank you, ma'am. Carolyn Kearney.
I'm Carolyn Kearney, sixteen eighty-seven Mental Springs Drive, STEM.
Ms. Kearney, will you move that microphone down a little bit toward your mouth, please? Thank you, ma'am.
Is that better?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Sixteen eighty-seven Mental Springs Drive, STEM. And we've been where we're at for thirty-seven years. We've had no problems, and we love where we live in, and when you get old, it's hard to, uh, try to move around again, and we oppose this, and that's, that's about all what I got to say.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Carson Wolk.
Hi, my name is Carson Wolk, and I live on twenty forty-seven Stone Ridge Drive. Um, I'm going to try my best not to start, and my heart rate's working against me a little bit. Um, I, I was able to speak last time regarding my land and the property which I own. I would like to take a minute to speak on my husband and I's small business care, small lawn care business that we own. It's called Wolk's Lawn Care LLC. This is half of our income that comes into our household. With the STEM ETJ being passed, it would negatively impact our business, forcing us to move our work vehicles into a garage and pave our dirt roads, leading to our house of which we run our business from. This would harm both my personal and business bank accounts. I would like to ask, when making your thoughts about the STEM ETJ, please remember the small businesses and what effects it'll make on it. Thank you.
Carson, I knew your father well when I had my bagel shop in Creedmore, and I'm sorry for your loss. I'm going to read the address. I, I can't make your name out, I apologize. Thirty-one oh-five Brogdon Road.
Who lives at thirty-one oh-five? Brogdon one? Yeah, is it Rachel something? It may be that. Is there a Rachel Ward here tonight? Okay, we'll move on to the next. Is anyone living at that address here tonight? Okay. Um, J.C.
My maiden name was Franklin. I missed that first one. Um, I'm J.C. Georgiev, one-one-seven four Smith Creek Way.
Thank you, ma'am.
Um, all right, so I kind of just want to go over, um, a petition that we've started. Uh, we're getting a lot of, um, signatures on it. In the Preservate Smith Creek alone, we have a hundred, and it's, it's been given out to multiple neighborhoods, so I want to make you aware of it, um, and for anyone interested in signing it. Excuse me. Um, so it's a six-part. One is to restore the one-acre minimum lot size in the watershed. The reason for that is because we've learned recently that Seguastilla does not have enough water to support a backup supply. So, um, a one acre would allow for enough room if one ran out of water and needed to drill a second well, um, and not have it so close to the septic. Then the, um, the part two is ban community wells in the Falls Lake watershed and other areas with existing private wells. Um, the, the very obvious reason for that is because when the area was planned, it was planned for private wells. So there's many homes right now that have private wells. Community wells have a larger draw, and the one behind us that's being constructed, for example, is expected to have a, a average of thirty-eight thousand gallons a night that they're going to be pumping. So because we're on the Triassic Basin, if somebody happens to have a private well on that same vein, then they could run dry. So essentially, we already started that process, and might as well be with the private wells. Part three is building a moratorium for health and safety assessment as allowed by general statute, six, one sixty D, one oh-seven. Part four is adopting of a well interference ordinance. Part five is no use of explosives to grade land for new developments. I, I know.
Can you repeat that last one?
Yes. No use of explosives to grade land for new developments. Um, for anyone who is knowledgeable about what's going on in the rural Durham area, there's a lot of wells that have collapsed due to explosives, and people have, um, not had water sources. The builder will give them the water as long as they're building, and then they lose. So it would be nice to just not have that problem here in Granville County. And then there's, um, as I mentioned, just in my neighborhood, the support for petitions in its entirety, one through six, and we have several pages, and it's growing. So I just wanted to make you aware of it, so you guys can maybe start talking about, um, ordinances and what kind of changes could be made, what kind of communication we could be having. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Real, real, real quick, I may have missed one. You, you missed, you mentioned six.
So.
I went through five, and then you stopped with.
Six is.
I'm taking copious notes.
Thank you for catching that. Okay, yes.
My pleasure.
So I'm glad you mentioned. So part six is the equitable fire tax distribution for Brassville Fire Department, um, and I'm happy to kind of read that description if I have enough time.
Yes, please.
So the Brassville Fire Department is dependent exclusively on volunteers to provide emergency services to citizens despite the district generating one-third of the fire tax revenue for the county, serving the highest population in a fire district, receiving more calls than two of the four fully or partially funded fire departments in the county, and operating exclusively with equipment that should be retired according to NFA nineteen oh-one. We, the undersigned concerned citizens of Granville County, North Carolina, sign in support of the petition, the local government to fully fund and equip the Brassville Fire Department to a level comparable with the funded stations serving the equivalent populations and call volumes within the county.
Awesome.
And, um, I just want to kind of lastly just say, you're going to recognize some names on this petition. It's, it's not, I mean, we've got some heavy hitters on here. We've got developers, realtors, surveyors, appraisers, so it's, it's everybody who works, and we see what's going on, and so we just love this area, and I would hate to see the disasters happening in other areas happen here as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sorry. Is it ready? It's all good? Thank you, ma'am. Shannon Fleming.
Hello, I am Shannon Fleming, nineteen ninety-one, Iowa Drive, STEM, North Carolina, and I'm speaking about the STEM ETJ, and I am opposing it. I am here not only as a STEM resident, but as a Democrat. I am the third vice-chair of the Democrat Party. I'm sure you've seen me here at your meetings very often. I come here to just keep up the good momentum as a part of the meetings. Um, not only here, but at the STEM talent hall, at the other community meetings. I have heard members speak, community members speak out about this over and over and over, about what's going on and how opposed they are to it. I know you guys have heard it, too. We've, we've heard their voices. One of the things I really wanted to speak about is that you talked about the Declaration of Independence earlier, and I want to remind the Commissioners that one of the vital factors of our declarations was based on the indisputable right. was based on the indisputable right that every person deserves representation. Having taxes, lettings, and undue burdens imposed on us without proper representation is the heart of what ETJs does to every person impacted. When you can't vote for the people who are imposing these rules, this is antithetical to what the forefathers dreamed for America. I encourage you to vote against the STEM ETJ and also every other ETJ that comes before you. Because this is not the only ETJ that you will have before you in this county. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Jamie Har.
Good evening. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Taking the time to listen to your concerns. And I appreciate the, uh, comments made at the beginning of the meeting through the Declaration of Independence in the meeting of the 4th of July. My name's Jamie Har. I live at 3213 Serenity Drive. I've been 25 years in Granville County. Moved here shortly after I retired from the Navy. My wife and I are both retired, partially disabled veterans. And I'm here about the STEM ETJ. This is something that, uh, if this goes through and we're put under the thumb of the STEM Unified Development Ordinance, is going to put an extreme burden on any retiree with fixed income. There are provisions in there. Um, I live at Serenity Drive, so I spend a lot of time maintaining that road. It's, we love it. I love a gravel road. I love having a, uh, place winding down through the woods like it is. And having to deal with paving that, paving my driveway, I have 800 feet of driveway. I mean, this is, I've got 20 acres of heaven that my wife and I have worked all our lives to get to. And now, we're going to be put into a position where we're going to have to leave because we can't afford to keep it up if this ETJ passes. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Paul Willis? Thank you, Mr. Har.
Alright, that's what I do. My name is Paul Willis. I live at 1190 Little Mountain Road. I've been in the one mile range of, uh, STEM ETJ expanded. Um, I have goats and chickens and dogs and donkeys and I don't want to pave my driveway. I've got my own well which is just fine. I think everybody here, pretty much everybody in here votes, I believe. I believe y'all are going to do it. We're strongly opposed to this. I bent out about a month ago. A lot of people in the area doesn't even know. I went up and down the Range Road and I went up and down the Little Mountain Road and told everybody what's going on. They signed the petition because they had no idea what was going on. And I told them, I said, "If you sign this and show up, we can be able to have to say so." So I'm strongly opposed to it. Um, I like the country. I've got a quarter mile driveway I do not want to pave. My barn is bigger than my Mazda. If the Mazda, I understand, uh, gets hit by a tree or a group of storm damage or something over, I think it was 30%. And I can't rebuild it. I have to put a stick over it.
No.
I don't want to. I really don't want to. The economy is informed and that's the whole reason we're here. We don't know what's going on. You guys got lawyers. You guys got paperwork. We have none. I never received anything in the mail. Yeah. So I think it's going to play a key role. I think everybody needs a little more time to be informed of what's going on. Really good. And, uh, that's all I have.
Brad Oldenburg?
Sorry, I'll turn it over. Good evening, Chairman and Vice Chairman, members of the Board. Uh, I'll be quick. Um, as you know, I come to just about every meeting. Um, we don't normally have attendance like this, so I applaud that. Um, I applaud the fact that, uh, people are here participating in the process, um, making their, uh, opinions known and, um, being passionate about it. However, what I want to do is I want to challenge them all. But having been going to meetings, it's not just this, it's many others who may have listened to me. After you speak, State Republican, many of the rest of the meetings. That's my job to do. But if you get on the way, the commissioners, the Republicans, the Democrats, the independents, they may speak to this, they may not, but you'll never know. It happens to happen. It wasn't you saying. So I advocate for you to do that. I know you're very concerned about your family. There are other issues that you're concerned about as well. So I think it's, uh, the, uh, a good thing.
Thank you, Mr. Oldenburg. Benjamin Sanders? How much time we have? Mr. Sanders, you move that mic closer to your, uh-
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. In the democracy in the United States, voting is up to every collective individual. I have noticed at many of the ETJ meetings, it is all middle-class landowners that come. There was one concerned member that came to a meeting. Over the past three years, I have been driving around in an old, broken-down, beaten-up truck and my wife's old Chevy with no extra money because I did the wise thing when I came across a little over $10,000 and bought a piece of property for my wife and daughter to live on. I noticed while I was redlining everywhere to build a house and I asked myself, "Why are they trying to make it possible for a little person to own land?" I've been through so much stuff just trying to legally sleep somewhere, but it's illegal for me to live there without water or electricity with my daughter. It's so strange considering amount of homelessness. I had a squatter come to my house, lived there while I was away, and still every power tool I had over, over just a month's stretch, I was busy with work with my company and didn't have time. My, my company's name is Sanders Recycling. Sorry, I'm out of breath. I'm doing all I can right now. My God's grace, I'm on something. And really, and you don't want to live in it. I soon realized I wasn't crazy when I looked into it. It is prudent that they don't want a small man to do with his own property what he chooses. I know the evil that goes on in politics. Everyone does. And the media wants us little people to fight, to fight it out to the death so they can swoop in like a buzzard and take everything our founding fathers went and died for. They'll have to take my blood with it. I'm not letting someone come here if I can help it and take everything I've got. I have a garden. I'm attracted to strange plants and funguses. They're cool. There's a mycorrhizal fungus called bleeding-tooth fungus near the endangered list. I'm currently trying to get it to attach to my pine trees. My property is a haven for ghost flowers growing extinct due to overdeveloping near watersheds. Only blooms once a week out of the year and it's this week that they're blooming. I have red buds, sarsaparilla trees, ferns galore. I bought my property, not the ETJ. I cut all my trees with my saw and my chopper. I put all my floors painted drywall. I know what their idea is. Their idea, we can't make illegal our land. So we'll just make it as discouraging and expensive that only those who have enough money to have a, a pretty and expensive house will live there. And they will buy lots of things because money means success. Politicians, they want me to sell my property because they know I won't have enough money to pave my driveway. That's $100,000 at least. My house doesn't even cost $100,000. If us little people like myself keep allowing this stuff to happen and don't raise our voice for one cry, we and our some incestuous wives will be just like the Indians, remembering what hap- remember what happened to them for owning land? We took it from them. And that's exactly, and the greed is still here that funded that. It's nowhere far away. It's right here in STEM. And I just, I'm tired of it. And I don't, I don't even speak in public. I don't like to speak in public. I wouldn't speak to like, you know, one person without stuttering, but somebody's got to speak it.
Can anyone else sign up that, I, I missed you somehow? I think I got everybody? Or is there anyone else that would like to speak on this matter? That did not sign up. Come on, sir. Just repeat that again, please, very slowly. Your name and address.
My name is Howard Bullock. My address is Rial 1, STEM. The place was left to me by my grandparents. It's 100 years old. I grew up there. 73 years I was there. The town of STEM is trying to take our land, as gentlemen just said. What I don't understand is, and I've fought this for a long time, is that my grandparents, myself, supported the town of STEM by shopping and buying stuff there. And they want to do this and not give me a right to have any say as to what they do. The mayor said that he could tell me what I could do with my land, but I couldn't vote if I didn't agree with what he was doing in the town of STEM. And so, in doing these things, I don't understand how you can tell a man that you can take his land and then not give him any other rights to say what happens when they're going to tell you what to do. So, I ask you, I'm opposed to it because of not having any representation. As he takes my land, I don't have any say. And by not having any say, you know, what's the say and what's going to change as time goes on? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our public comments. I'd like to thank everyone for, excuse me? That concludes, uh, is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Please come forward, sir.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for, uh, can you hear me? I have an ear infection.
And your name and address, sir.
My name's Casey Dover. I live at 312 Coachman's Trail. I'm the mayor of the town of STEM. And I had not intended to speak tonight. Um, please excuse me, I have an inner ear infection on my right side, so I can't really hear very well. Um, I've listened to the comments tonight and I have to tell you that every one of them is incorrect. Bottom line. That being said, that being said-
We're going to, excuse me, Mr. Dover. We're going to ask that, we're going to ask that he be afforded the same respect you were. If you cannot refrain from speaking, we're going to ask you to leave.
Thank you. Amen. Um, with that being said, um, gravel driveways, I'm going to digress out one first. Paving is multiple things. Our UDO extends paving to concrete, asphalt, stone. Stone equals rock. You don't have to have the Romans lay it, but it does, is gravel. If you look at most of the driveways in the town of STEM, they are gravel. Dirt roads, don't even know what that's about. Um, if you look behind Dollar General and Railroad Street, it is gravel. Lions, the Lion Station Road behind Dollar General is gravel. Hopkin Street is gravel. And I can go on and go on and go on. Railroad Street is getting ready to be paved. It's getting ready to be paved by the NC DOT because they're under contract to do so because when we took up the railroad cha- uh, Railroad Street. We want to encourage your small business. All this is about, the, the, the ask for the ETJ is protect the borders in STEM to preserve the life that we have in place, not keep developers from going kind of crazy. Um, we don't want this to be adversarial. We want this to be community agreement. That's why we held to, um, informational sessions. I've got a list of the 58, I think the number's 58 now, of notices that returned to all of our, to return to us that we've sent. We have all that list. I'll be glad to share it with all of you, um, if you'd like it. Um, I can go through the list. I just looked at it. It's grown. I think that we sent almost 600 notices. We had 60, I think, because we, 58 to 60 returned. Um, thank you for allowing me to speak. Um, I just think everybody should check the facts. Look at the UDOs, mobile homes. We align with the counties. Um, AR40 is equivalent to the town of STEM's UDO in the proposed ETJ. So it's equal. It's a wash unless you decide you want to build a development. That's where I'm at. So Wednesday night, 7 o'clock, we have a hearing in the STEM Rurting Club, 7 to 9. Um, we've got to see you there and take public comments. Thank you. Y'all have a great evening.
So, uh, Mr., Mr., Mr. Dover, what, what night is the meeting?
It is Wednesday night at the STEM Rurting Club, 7 o'clock to 9 p.m. Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Dover, there's a question for you.
It's out of decorum, Mr. Dover, but I'd like to ask you a question. Especially addressing the modular issue about the phasing, phasing out of modulators. I understand from your UDO, as long as the siding is good, in good repair and is the, and the screeding underneath is a foundational thing, is in, um-
Intact.
Intact, and as well as the tongue is screeded from view, that a single wide is permitted within your, your ETJ and your UDO?
That's correct. One of the things that we did is, we tried to cover all bases, right? That was one of the things that was brought on the first, um, informational session, was the mobile homes. We met with your county planner, Mr. Barry Baker, and he explained, he explained to us why the, um, mobile homes were part of that actual, why they were for, right, low-cost, low-cost housing and they're convenient, some are a piece of property. And so we aligned with the AR40 to cover that, if I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that aligns with your counties as well.
So the phasing out project on this type of thing where you're not allowed to have a, a single wide, is that, uh, what, what do you have on that?
So that, that is inside the town limits, inside the corporate limits of STEM. That's when that's called into play. We still have some single wides in STEM and those would be grandfathered into the change.
So as far as gardening and chickens and goats and all that kind of thing?
So livestock you cannot have in town. That's, that's, that is part of the ordinance. That's in town. Has nothing to do with ETJ. Our hunting doesn't, there's hunting in ETJ. That doesn't change. Nothing changes there. Um, we have chickens in town. I have chickens in the subdivision I live in. Um, we had chickens downtown across from the Dollar General, not Dollar General, but the, uh, BP station. Those people have just moved, but I had many, many complaints about a rooster that would attack the rental wood next door. So I know that's not true.
Okay, so rural life will still exist in the ETJ unless someone wants to come forward and build a subdivision of some sort?
That's a whole other issue. That becomes, that's when the, the ETJ comes into play.
Okay, so unless somebody wants to build a subdivision and they want to just peacefully exist on their land and have their gravel driveway and their chickens and their goats in the ETJ of STEM, nothing will change for them. Is that correct?
Carry on.
Carry on. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Just one second. How much, just one second, sir. How much time? Are we within 30 minutes? Yeah, I'm sorry, sir. We, we've already used our 30 minutes for, for discussion tonight. I apologize to you. Um, I'm sure there'll be, uh, at our next meeting, an opportunity for you to speak. Um, we want to make sure that we got everyone in that wanted, that had signed up to speak. In fact, we got one person in that did not sign up to speak and then the mayor was also allowed to speak. Um, so thank everybody for being here. We're going to move on to other business and close our public comments. County manager, in regards to, uh, Ms. Chunevia, I got that right, uh, J.C. Um, those are issues that we are continuing to discuss and, uh, we look forward to further discussion with you on that. Thank you. Ms. Waikel, if you could, please, um, regards to parks, railways, and recreation mini-grants.
Good evening. So I am here to present this evening, uh, the 2023-24 Recreation Advisory Committee Mini Grant Request. For those in attendance that may not know the background of these, the Parks, Greenways, and Recreation Advisory Committee conducts an annual mini-grant program each year for projects that align with the goals of the Recreation Master Plan. The program's objective is to provide recreation to as many residents as possible, especially in areas- in areas of the county that are underserved by recreation opportunities, or those that have not received prior grant funding. For 2023-24, six applications were received, and the committee met this spring to review each application in detail, first to determine if the proposed project fit within the program goals, but also the grant guidelines. From that review, the committee selected four projects to recommend to you this evening for complete or partial funding at a total cost of just over thirty-eight, almost thirty-nine thousand dollars. The recommended projects are listed on this screen. They're also in your agenda packets. The town of Butler is recommended to receive fifteen thousand dollars for a playground structure, shade structure at Butler Athletic Park. The city of Creedmoor, seven thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars for improvements to Creedmoor Memorial Park, which is a fencing around their soccer goals and their multipurpose field. The town of Stovall, six thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars for picnic tables and benches for their community park. And Treasuries of Joy, nine thousand six hundred seven dollars for a trail and community garden with street access at, in Granville and Sycamore Streets in Oxford. There is funding available in the fiscal year 2324 budget and the mini-grant program budget line, and so we wanted to recommend those to you this evening for approval. I'm happy to take questions.
Yes, ma'am. Any commissioner have any questions?
I appreciate you filling us in on this and also following up on last year's mini-grant applications and awards, and that the work in STEM and Creedmoor were completed with just a couple of dimpled chads hanging out there, as well as all the other grants that we had awarded. So as a member of the Grahamville County Parks and Recreation Committee, I moved that we approved these requests for mini-grant fundings.
As a member of that committee, I'll second.
I'm gonna hold just for a second here. If we could, if the audience could just bear with us just for a moment and give us a little quiet and decorum, so that we can go through our process and think about the things we need to do up here as a board without being interrupted to be greatly appreciated. So we have a first and a second yet, do we?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I got a question next. When do those mini-grants go out for this?
So once you all approve, and I'm not sure if this is actually working, is this working?
This is not working, can I? I can hear you good.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's picking up very well. Is that better?
Much better.
Yep.
So, once the projects are approved by the board, we'll communicate with the grants applicants, and they have to sign an agreement, and that's actually under review right now in the county attorney's office. Once they sign that agreement, we release the funding for them, and they have one year to complete their project.
Well, I was saying, when do you have the platform?
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I believe the application's released in December, and it's open through January. I wasn't responsible for this last year, and I know they changed that timeframe, but I believe it's open for a month between December and January. I think they're due at the end of January. I'm not exactly sure, but I can get that information for you if you need it.
Please.
Before we, before we vote, could you please talk a little bit about the 2223 projects in Creedmoor and Stovall and STEM, and just kind of give the public and the board a quick go-over of those projects and what was completed?
So, so last year's project?
Yes, ma'am.
Twenty-two, twenty-three. Okay, I'm sorry. So last year, the town of Butler applied for almost fifteen thousand dollars, and they built an ADA swing set and put rubber matting at the Butler Athletic Park. The city of Creedmoor received twenty-five thousand dollars for a community sports plaza that's a concrete pad that they have installed at their memorial park for outdoor basketball, pickleball, and outdoor fitness. City of Oxford received five thousand dollars to purchase new equipment and replace some outdated equipment. The town of STEM received twenty-five thousand dollars for playground equipment at their park. Harley Middle School received almost five thousand six hundred dollars for baseball, softball, field improvements. And South Granville High School received seventy-five hundred dollars for softball, field improvements, and to purchase some equipment.
So we dispersed it pretty much county-wide, and to benefit the citizens all of Grahamville, and of course, by dispersing those, the fundings for those school fields, just so the public knows that one of the obligations of that board was to ensure that those fields would be accessible to the public. So, that's why those were actually approved. Any other comments?
Historically, over the period that we've been offering these mini-grants, and it goes back, gosh, probably fifteen, twenty years that we've been doing this, I mean, there's been some gaps where we, like, suspended the mini-grant programs, especially while we were doing the tennis courts at the gap. There was a couple of two-year gap, but historically, I believe that just about all of the asks that were brought forward were approved. There were a couple of things where we figured out that some of the asks were things we're already doing, or were about to do, so we, like, tabled those, but for the most part, any organization that came forward, many times municipalities, because you have to be a non-for-profit, organized non-for-profit, not just some rando that wants to pave, you know, do some playground at their place, but every one of those grant applications has been scrutinized and approved. I think over the history of this grant application, and I believe that we've given out about, I'm just gonna throw out a rough number, eighty thousand dollars a year for the last twelve years, mostly going to our school systems, especially with elementary schools doing different play structures and things at their facilities, which are open to the public during non-school hours.
So I think that that's very accurate. You have better history than I do here with these, but there were two years, I believe, that we didn't fund this program, but generally, we expect the asks to come in around eighty thousand. We were kind of surprised this year that they didn't come in that high. And then, as the committee reviewed the applications, as you stated, there were some things that did not fit, or did not fit within the purpose of the funds, or there were some concerns the committee had, and so they were recommending partial funding.
And just because STEM is here tonight, I'm gonna pick on them, and I'm gonna just, you know, ballpark it, that over the last couple of years, we've probably given about fifty grand to the town of STEM for their play space there behind the fire department, and I'm almost sure that a very good portion, ninety percent of it, has probably been financed, labor excluded, because I know that Mr. Palvis personally unloaded four tons of mulch to that playground, and then also dug the holes by hand for that playground. So I think that in STEM particularly, just coming from memory, you've got a couple hundred grand worth of improvements to that STEM park there. You know, it's not a swing set you put in your backyard that you go to Lowe's and buy for fifteen hundred bucks. When you talk about these swing sets and things, you're looking at adding zeros, fifteen thousand, thirty thousand dollars for a playset. So, it's an outstanding program, and any non-for-profits are willing to, open to apply in the winter season, so to speak, from November-ish to January-ish, and we would love to have more applications next year.
That was the reason why I asked, because I didn't know whether it would change.
I think it did. I think we opened it. I think they, the intent was to open it earlier and keep it open longer, so that we could get as many applications as possible, but I just don't know the exact dates.
And Oak Hill, I know for fact, has been a benefactor of this program as well.
Oh, yeah, we have, and that's why we, they was asking, asking me when have, I mean, what was the time for the apply for this?
And we generally will put that out as a press release, and it goes on our website, and we try to push it out as hard as we can so that folks are aware. And I'd just like to echo Commissioner Karen's comments about the program being wonderful, because it does allow Granville County to provide recreation funding in areas that may not necessarily have the funding to provide and support recreation.
Stovall has a wonderful park because of the grants that we've been able to give. And STEM, you're lucky I'm here tonight. I wanted to go play on STEM's park after I saw the pictures of him being finished today. So, I mean, I'm just telling you, I would rather be playing.
Those mini-grants, since I've been on this board, have really all over the county. Have, if you can go all over the county, you can find the bar, all over the county, come from this mini-grant. And that's why I asked, because people was asking. Even Grass Creek. You go to Grass Creek, you find, for this mini-grant, they have walking trails and stuff around in Grass Creek.
These shelters?
And the shelter and everything, but they have done, this mini-grant have done a lot. Apply for it. It ain't nothing. But try, but try. And you know, hey, it's fair, it's safe, knock you down one time, get up, try again. Keep on trying. That's why I wanted to know. It's from the start, you can apply start in December, right? But thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and we do appreciate the mini-grants for the city of Creedmoor, where they have right now a major project ongoing there, and it's very, it's gonna be a special place there, so we appreciate it. Okay, we have a motion. First, do I have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Phillips, please, sir.
Thank you, Chairman May, Grahamville County Commissioners, if you can hear me okay. The purpose of this request is to consider awarding a fixed-price service contract to the installation of CAT six cabling with, needed for wireless technology within the Grahamville County courthouse. The background on this request is in March of 2023, the North Carolina Administrative Offices of the Courts conducted a radio frequency study. The Grahamville County courthouse determined design objectives needed to support a wireless technology system, or Wi-Fi, to accommodate their virtual court system platform, also known as wave solution. NCAOC is responsible for deploying the wave solution in all the courthouses statewide. The project ordinance will fund hardware installation, configuration, and integration services needed to activate the new wireless network within the courthouse. However, NCAOC is requesting assistance in funding the CAT six cable installation. North Carolina Administrative Offices of the Court preferred master service agreement contractor, Presidio Network Solutions LLC, conducted the radio frequency assessment and has provided a not-to-exceed price proposal of twenty thousand one hundred dollars for the CAT six cable installation. It's my recommendation awarding the fixed-price service contract to North Carolina Administrative Offices of the Court in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand one hundred dollars, unless approved by authorized change order. There is funding existing in the 2324 fiscal year to accommodate this request. I'm happy to answer any questions if there is any.
Yes, Mr. Wolfert.
Is this the latest technology, Mr. Cozart?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so the CAT six is...
CAT six cabling is pretty standard. I think the system, the, that the court system's gonna put in place is the latest technology.
Okay, thank you.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I move that we make a motion that we approve the request of Mr. Phillips.
Mr. Wolfert has a motion. Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Second, Mr. Cozart, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. We're moving now on to the Grahamville County Planning Board, and to make appointments to the Grahamville County Planning Board. The Planning Board serves at the Board of Commissioners' pleasure and reviews and makes recommendations to the governed body. The terms of Howard Tyler, District Four, and Justin Mollstein, District Seven, expired July 1, 2023. Mr. Mollstein has resigned, and Mr. Tyler is retiring after twenty-eight years of service. There are no applications to file at this time. Currently, there's a vacancy in District Four and District Seven. Are there any?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and making some headway on this, beating the brushes, and feel very confident that by our next meeting, I have a recommendation. And also, District Seven, we're still, still looking.
Okay, so we have no takers at this time, but we'll move on to the next item, because these commissioners are looking. Everyone else good with their membership, correct? Okay. Move on to the Oxford Planning Board Extraterritorial Matters, which would be their ETJ. The terms of Tony Woodliffe at Large Northwest and John Wilford Northeast expire June 30 of 2023. Applications have been received from Neil Grissom, District One, and Victoria Bradshaw, District Two. Others are serving as Luanne Gilligan, Michael Kinlow, and Charlotte Evans. Do I have any motions by the board?
I'm just, so, Mr. Neil Grissom's application and Miss Victoria Bradshaw.
Mr. Wolfert is willing to serve again, so we only have one to reappoint, and that'd be for Mr. Wolfert. Motion for Mr. Neil Grissom. Do I have a second?
To be reappointed, to be reappointed. Second.
Okay, very good.
And Mr. Wolfert, Wolfert will be reappointed.
Very good. Second. Mr. Jay with a motion, Mr. Wolfert with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, it comes to the Van Scramble Community College Board of Trustees. Keith Sharon of District Six was appointed on the June 19, 2023 meeting to fill the vacancy created. However, the statute states that trustees cannot have worked full-time for the college in the past five years, so unfortunately, Mr. Sharon could not fulfill that position. So, do I have a motion to fill that position, the vacant position, for any commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I received, there was an application this afternoon from Miss Sabine Stovall, and she was very excited. She, I would like to make a motion to appoint her to fill the vacancy.
Mr. Wolfert, motion to, for Miss Sabine, and Mr. Jay with second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Hobgood, if you could, come down and make the presentation regarding the opioid settlement funds and expenditure authorization.
Good evening, Chairman May and Commissioners. So, just a bit of background on this item. As you all know, you've all been pretty familiar with this, that five years ago, the county formed an opioid advisory committee, and two years ago, Grahamville County signed on to wave one of the National Opioid Settlement, which resulted from a lawsuit filed against the major manufacturers and distributors of opioid products in the United States. And earlier this year, wave two of that settlement was also approved by this Board of Commissioners. By the year 2039, for both waves of the settlement, Grahamville County is set to receive six million eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. We began receiving payments in 2022, and we have already placed four hundred and ninety-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars in a separate revenue fund. In the upcoming fiscal year, we expect to receive an additional nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars. So, for the past, since the money has come in, the Opioid Advisory Committee has worked with community stakeholders and the NC Association of County Commissioners to develop a spending plan for these initial funds. Public input has been gathered since December of 2022 via survey, as well as two public engagement sessions held here in March, and in Creedmoor in May. So as a result of that work and this public feedback, the Opioid Advisory Committee is now recommending to this Board of Commissioners, who is responsible for approving all expenditures from the settlement, an initial allocation of one hundred and five thousand dollars. This would be under the broad umbrella of collaborative strategic planning. More specifically, this money would be used... More specifically, this money would be used to, uh, create and hire an opioid coordinator who would administer these long-range grant funds and work, continue working with these community stakeholders, as well as providers, uh, throughout the next 16 years that will be receiving this money. Uh, there's a small additional amount of approximately $5,000 that would be used for public outreach and educational initiatives. Uh, I'm happy to answer any additional questions you may have, and...
Any of the members of the opioid, uh, committee have any comments?
We've worked on this with the, uh, North Carolina Association.
And, um, this is just the first step, and there'll be more follows, and, um, this, this is a really tough issue to deal with because it affects people of all ages, from teenagers to senior citizens. And this is, uh, it's an extremely difficult thing to wrap your head around because it takes all the... From the, uh...
Traditional-type drug user.
But, uh, it, it's, um, it is very dangerous, and the fact that, uh, people die every day, and... And, uh, although we don't have as many deaths in Grahamville County as they do in some of the larger populated counties, we still experience those, experience the loss. We have members of our committee that have experienced the loss. And, you know, hopefully, we can, through education and through some other initiatives that we plan to, uh, put in in the near future, we'll, uh, hopefully chip away at it.
Any other members?
Mr....
I, 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 I'll just, uh, have a question to ask. If, if we, the opioid committee, if we try to make some kind of plan to, uh, help the situation, I mean, I say help the situation, uh, after you, we know what these people have...
Your mic.
So...
Okay.
Uh, if you know these people have that problem?
Oh. What echo I'm getting from? Anyway, uh, these people that have that problem, and, and, and after we give them, uh, treatments, what do we do from there?
A lot of it is up to the individual. We have fallout programs, but you know, the old saying, leave the horse in water, but you can't make a drink.
Right.
And the individual that's suffering the addiction problem, help is often, for one or another, take it, is, is a big question. This is a type, this thing is so addictive that the rate of failure to, uh, first treat, first round treatment, rate of failure is extremely high. Very few people get it first round, and it takes several, several rounds of, uh, going back and forth, using different programs to, uh, to come, you know, to combat the, uh, the illness, so to speak. It is one of the toughest things I've ever tried to really wrap my head around because it, it, it covers virtually everyone, all walks of life. And you, you got it from the, the people who are addicts that, uh, use every day, and you got from there all the way to, uh, senior citizens that are, are just, uh, pillpoppers, so to speak. And it, it, it covers, it, it covers such a, a vast array of people, it's, it's, you may have someone in, that you know that's addicted, and you don't even know it.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think Commissioner, um, Jade, when he was asking that, and of course Commissioner Gooch's comments, I'd really just be very interested when the, uh, job description for this person, Mr. Hobgood, I tell you, I'm just looking forward to seeing. I've appreciated all the work on this, just seeing what that job description entails because I agree with my colleagues on the complexity of this, and I think it's gonna be a wonderful opportunity for our county, but I, I can see the challenge in pulling it off, so I look forward to seeing that.
Right, and, you know, the, the committee's been active for quite some time. I know that, uh, Commissioner Gooch inherited the chairmanship from, uh, his predecessor, um, the late Edgar Smoke, um, and it was one of his passions. This is a, a pandemic that reaches across all socioeconomic levels, and, uh, there's no age or, or sex discrimination, unfortunately, in that, in that. And that, um, our health department has been dealing with this, and I know we put together a, um, public resource guide for our first responders and the, um, distribution of meloxicaine and all those things that combat it, but the, the simple fact is that, you know, without a full-time, active staff member to combat this, it is so much to pull together. We're $3.8 million in 16 years on the first round, and then another $3 million on the second round of opiate fundings from the lawsuits that have come from this nationally. And North Carolina was one of the, um, predecessors in setting the, uh, the benchmark high standard for suing these, um, opiate manufacturers. And then you, you, you couple that with the, uh, open borders and the, the fentanyl that's coming across, and just, you know, the scourge, uh, and, and the, the stigma attached to addiction and this type of thing is, it is not like anything else where you build up an addiction to it. It is a one-and-done in many cases, and it is just, it, it affects everyone. You know, you, you get, you know, now with the, the, a candy or a vape coming in from China, you know, is suspect of, of fentanyl, and, and just the things that are coming into this country on this type of, uh, pandemic. I mean, it, it just breaks my heart, and I, I fully support, um, this, um, position to help us to put a, a full-time face and person with this, this coordination of effort to try and bring through our probably health department. You know, we're battling it in our jails, obviously, people that are, you know, folks that are in trouble and wind up incarcerated in our system. Unfortunately, the, 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 the safety valve of government is not catching a lot of this, and we really need, in this rural county, to get a handle on, you know, thankfully, with our, support of our sheriff and, and those in law enforcement, um, we need this.
Mr. Chairman May.
Yes, sir.
I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but is anybody in the audience that'd like to, to speak on this issue? Someone in the audience that's a member of the board?
So, um, I, I learned recently of, um, and I don't remember if you were in your childhood, but one thing I would need to know is IDing, researching, IDing, um, just a little, like, if you're, um...
Would you like to be on the opioid committee?
Uh, yeah.
And her name was what?
That's a problem with...
And her phone number?
That's a problem with finding volunteers.
You know, if, uh, I was at the district meeting, um, all the week here, and they was talking, and it's more...
I think some very tragic losses, too. Some people that are very near and dear to me and others here.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Any promotion?
The recommendation is the county manager recommends the Board of Commissioners approve a resolution to direct the expenditure of opioid settlement funding in an amount of $105,000 to provide initial funding for a full-time employee to coordinate and implement strategies, programs to combat the opioid epidemic in Grahamville County from the settlement funds and the lifecycle of the fund.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
I'd like to ask one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Who is going to perform the search for this individual?
Mr. Hobgood, uh, is, is the board decided how that, that search is going to be conducted?
So, the, I guess, an ask from staff tonight, I don't think, step in if I'm incorrect about any of those, those is to release the funding to allow county administration, HR, possibly working with the health department, to then move to that next, uh, yeah, setting the official salary and job description.
So part of that motion, county manager, is that we're requesting that you expedite that process so that, with that can be a priority and get, get it done, so that we can start moving forward with that funding stream to begin our process of combating this from, from the committee perspective. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Thank you. Next matter, uh, county manager, if you would, is to inform the public of a public request for public comment on draft air quality permit request from Certain T LSE's Oxford facility. And, um, I'll read the background, if it's okay with you, county manager, then, then we can maybe have some questions from commissioners and so forth. And I, I won't read it all, but just some of it. The NC Department of Environmental Quality, Division of Air Quality is now accepting public comment on a draft air quality permit for Certain T LSE Oxford facility. A new fiber class, um, mat manufacturing facility in Grahamville County, the public comment period will end July 27th. Uh, the information is being distributed to churches, local governments, healthcare facilities, and childcare centers, multifamily housing communities, and so forth, and that's being done by DEQ at this time. The Grahamville County Board of Commissioners want to make sure the public's aware of this permit request, and the county commissioner is seeking expert input on this matter, and will submit comments of their own, and we'll be doing that through the county manager. And if you could go into a little bit more information on that, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, when we received this request for public comment, um, we had some internal conversation that's been forwarded to our emergency management department, also to the Grahamville Vance Public Health Department for them to consider, uh, any comments they might independently want to submit, but this seemed like a significant enough, um, air, potential air quality issue and, and change in potential air quality, that we wanted to bring this to the attention of the community beyond the outreach that the, um, NC DEQ Division of Air Qualities, their own efforts, might achieve. And so we, we wanted to bring this item before the, the board and the public tonight. I've made copies of the, um, the press release and the information sheet that were shared with the county, um, here, and we'll make those available to the public in other ways as well. Um, it, it isn't just the county, but any citizen or any organization is entitled to submit comments. And again, the, the deadline for public comments is July 27th, so it's not too far away. So, uh, encourage folks who are interested in this issue, or think they might be, to, to check out the fact sheet, uh, read up on the information, and, and consider what questions or thoughts they might have about it.
Thank you, county manager. Any commissioners have any questions or concerns? County manager, so we will be providing through your office and through your interaction, uh, some, some questions regards to emissions and fallout and things of that nature, questions that, uh, may be, uh, really we're not scientists, uh, but would, uh, at least provide us with reasonable responses that all the necessary mitigation and necessary, uh, um, DEQ matters are, um, are resolved, are resolved to, to, to meet the permitting? That's correct. Okay. Any other questions or concerns? It's really no action on that, other than the fact that county manager, uh, the board agrees, and I think we do agree, that we will direct them to take the necessary steps. And also, if you would, interact with, um, in regards to putting together some public comments for, for DEQ on behalf of our board, in addition to, uh, get with the city manager of Oxford, uh, to get some feedback from them and see if they have any concerns, and actually work with some of their people as well. Certain T is a valuable resource in this county, and we know that, we hope, and we know that they'll do all the things that are necessary to, to work with DEQ in this matter, but it's very important that, uh, all the citizens' comments are heard on this. We have had some inquiries, and we want to make sure that, uh, those voices are heard and the appropriate, uh, response is made to DEQ. Move on to, uh, the county manager's report, am I correct? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no further items this evening.
Mr. Ren, do you have anything for us tonight?
No, sir.
Good to see you, Mr. Ren. We're now go to Commissioner's comments, beginning with District Six Commissioner Timothy Karen.
All right, super fun stuff. Um, the Historical Society at the Harris Exhibit Hall is featuring a local artist named Elizabeth Donahue. Um, she's from, well, District Five now, lives on Country Lane. Um, it opened yesterday, it's going for the next couple of weeks. She's from Creedmoor area. If you've ever driven through Creedmoor and glanced at the, uh, First Baptist Church in Creedmoor, not at the church, but opposite side where they run their mission, um, there is a portrait of Jesus, a young Jesus, um, that she has done, and also if you've ever seen any of the, um, historic homes of Grahamville County or of Raleigh, posted in a, uh, format that's, uh, watercolor. But anyways, Elizabeth Donahue, local artist, featured at the, um, Harris Exhibit Hall, uh, for the next couple of weeks. I think you should go and check it out. So that, and, um, we talked about appointments earlier this evening. We had none for one of our, I think it was the Oxford ETJ, um, that was up, but, uh, District Six has a two, actually three appointments available. One is for the Economic Development Commission. Uh, we are seeking a, uh, appointment for that, um, committee, as well as the HRC, the Human Relation Commission. Um, District Six is in need of two individuals who are willing to serve on those. If you have any interest in those, you can go to GrahamvilleCounty.org and, uh, take a look at those, as with any other committees that the county offers, and submit your application. Um, I am in need, I've run out of people that I can task with those, uh, appointments, and I would be very grateful if somebody would step forward and volunteer to represent the county on those two committees. Thank you very much.
And, and you, they don't have to actually reside in that, your district, do they?
I certainly would love for them to, but, uh, you know, they don't.
So, Mr. Karen?
Okay.
Commissioner Jimmy Gooch, District Seven.
Yes, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, and thank to, thank you all for speaking and speaking your mind. And, uh, I'm used to, this opioid thing has really baffled me, and, and it, it weighs on my mind heavily. Usually, you got a problem, you work out a solution to it. Like, for instance, tonight, my microphone is not working right. With Commissioner Kozar here, it can turn his phone, his microphone on, and you can hear me. So we arrived at a solution to the problem. But there is no solution. There, there is no solution, and it's so wide and varied, uh, you know, sometimes you feel like you're trying to empty a 50,000-gallon tank with a thimble. It just, it's very frustrating, but if we can save one life, you know, it, it will be, it will be worth the effort put forward. If we can keep one person from becoming addicted, it will be worth it. We want to be sure that we spend the money in a way that's most effective, and we've been grappling with this for over two years. In fact, we've been grappling with it for almost three years now. So it, it's been a, it, it's been a tough thing, tough road here we're on, and it's a tough road for the people who are addicted. And, uh, I get down off my high horse now. Hope everyone has a good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Gooch. Uh, Commissioner Jay?
Now I'm on. Okay. Uh... Uh, I'd just like to say to those that came out and spoke in public comments, and those that didn't come just in support, we hear your cry. Uh, we thank you for, for coming out and voicing your opinion about the ETJ. We hear you. We're not, we're just sitting up here not listening to you. We listen to you, and we hear you. And thank you for coming out, and thank you for doing it. Uh, just like to talk about, a little bit about the opiate, uh, every time I go to the, with district meeting, we, uh, they talk about, they talk about this opiate and the settlements and more money coming down, and, and we still finding that, uh, every, every day you wake up, somebody's done OD, and I don't know what we can do, but we need to do something of. Uh, and I appreciate the, the ones that sit on the op, on the opioid board, uh, I feel your pains, and I appreciate your service doing it. Uh, also, just like to say, um, anybody, uh, Commissioner Karen said he had an opening and had two open, well, I got an open on the animal control. Uh, anybody want to go, want to, uh, sign up and come on there? For animal control, please do. Uh, just like, also just like to say to the, to the board, uh, that, you know, after but, the budget, with the budget section is over with and everything, that, uh, I appreciate all the willingness and the, what everyone have done. Uh, you know, that this board listen and try to do the best they can for the citizen here in Grandville County, and we appreciate it. Each and every one that took a part in doing. And, and tell you, and tell your spouses, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jay. Commissioner Rob Williford.
No comments.
Mr. Williford has no comment. Commissioner Sue Henman.
Well, thank you, sir. Um, first of all, I'd just like to ask each and every one of you to please keep our library's director's son in your prayers. He's dealing with a very, to me, hard time, and as a teenager to deal with cancer, I'm going to say it, um, it's not easy. Um, so please keep him in, in your prayers. Um, also, I will be at the meeting on Wednesday night for the ETJ meeting. Um, I also will be in Austin. I swore up and down, when I divorced, I'd never have to go back to Texas, and I'm going back to Texas. So, but we learn a lot at these meetings, um, and it, and it's just like you all coming to talk and speak. Because we don't know, if you all don't come to us and let us know what's going on in your minds, we have no idea. These seats have never, except for one time in the entire time I've been on this board, never been this full. And if it takes something like this to get you all upset enough to come in, believe me, I'm willing to listen to that, um, because it's, it's important for you all to know what's going on in this county and for us to know what you think. So thank you, thank you very much for coming out and voicing your opinion once again. Um, and that's all I have, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tony Cozart.
Thank you so much, Ms. Chairman, and greetings to everyone in attendance tonight. I just wanted to, uh, say, um, condolences to the Mount Vernon Baptist Church. Uh, Pastor Morgan and his congregation has been so nice to invite public service officials out for service probably for the last ten years or so. And, of course, he, uh, very suddenly passed away, and we surely, um, send our best to that church. And speaking of Mr. Robinson, I will say, I want to commend the library staff on the summer programs. Uh, my grandson's been there, and those programs, they're talking about it already, I think an alligator is coming, uh, in another week or so. But those programs are playing so well, and, uh, I want to commend the library, uh, for having such, um, educational opportunities for our kids during the summertime. So, uh, hats off to him, and, and surely we send prayers to him for him and his son. Thank you so much, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. I just have a few comments. I'll make it as quick as I can possibly. Uh, part of doing that, the, um, because I think we're going to go into a closed session after this, does, pardon me speaking, does the county attorney or the county manager have any other comments to make? Thank you. We made a lot of progress in our, our volunteer fire department fire contracts. As you under, as you know, our, our volunteers are, are most appreciated. Uh, they are a vital service to Granville County's, uh, emergency services. Uh, we have made tremendous progress, and we are now in receipt of, of a number of those and, and more forthcoming that will allow, uh, for additional funding on their behalf. Uh, one of the things, uh, was talked about equitable distribution. That was a recommendation that was made by the fire consultant, the fire commission. Uh, this year voted to fund all fire departments with a paid firefighter. So, uh, that exhausted the tax revenue, which is, uh, six cent. It, uh, at this year was somewhere, somewhere around one point eight seven million dollars. Prior to that, uh, was one point two million dollars. This coming year, it will be likely much more than that. So we hope to make the right progress on that. There's no, uh, question that, um, the fire departments all deserve funding, but there's also, uh, no question that we have to do so in an equitable manner. And so I encourage those fire departments who, and they know this, I've made this comment to them, uh, those that, uh, really have to have their voice as well. When the Fire Chiefs Association meet, they need to voice their opinions strongly at the Fire Chiefs Association, and the fire commission, uh, will, will make those decisions along with, uh, from the input from them and the public. Um, we met with the sheriff, Commissioner Karen, Commissioner Cozart, and I met with the sheriff this past week. We had a good meeting. Uh, he believed by the end of July, he would have most of his, um, detention officers and deputy positions, uh, filled, or, or close to. Uh, and that was very beneficial to hear. Uh, he also stated that the, uh, pay increase in, in the, the effort of, and I give the county manager and assistant county manager and all staff a lot of credit for working out a process to be able to fund, uh, and raise the funding of all our, um, um, public safety personnel, including our nine one one operators. Uh, it is essential that we remain competitive. It is a first step process. It will, it will continue. It's going to continue. It's something that all communities have to deal with, uh, public safety, um, is being challenged along with healthcare. It's going to cost more and more each year until it stabilizes, and I really don't have no one that's going to happen. But literally, there are police departments throughout the country operating somewhere around the sixty to seventy percent capacity and even less. And so it is hopeful that we can get to that point. He also noted that the body scanner was in place, that he had eight operators trained to use the body scanner for the jail, which is essential. They'll be able to detect any and all, um, contraband that may be on a person's body or inside their body. Uh, that, that makes our jail a safer place. So we're, we're committing that. I appreciate the county manager, uh, directing some action toward the DEQ matter, um, and hopefully we can get some good comments to them and ensure that the public's, uh, trust that we are looking after that. Um, I want to congratulate Stan Windborn, our new school superintendent. Uh, I, I, I think, uh, he's going to be an outstanding compliment to our county. Uh, he's a wonderful man. He is a Granville County public school, uh, product, and I think he'll do an outstanding job. And I noticed that Ms. Hayes is here from the school board, and I appreciate her being here tonight. We also are working on some form of commitment to hopefully gain some additional funding from the, uh, legislation in regards to the, uh, School Safety Act, in which we can ascertain some more funding for school resource officers. County R size, uh, we need to fill positions and deputy positions, but more in, in turn, we also, uh, need SROs, and the school system would like to place an SRO at every school. And of course, we would like to have the appropriate funding from the state to help us with that. And it is, it is there. Uh, hopefully, we can get the right conveyance from the school system and the county manager office to be able to work to that and bring it before the board so we can have a comprehensive review of that and discussion with that. Um, the ETJ has not come before the county, and I make a point to try to do my very best to listen to every comment that is made and the sincerity in which it's made. I have, uh, it's clear that the people that attend the meetings are not wanting an ETJ. What I, what I'd like to see happen, though, is, is make sure that, that when we have these robust discussions, which are good and healthy for any community, that are done so in a way that's respectful to both parties. And that it's done in a way that there's not toxicity spread through our community, and the violence raises its head when it's not necessary. Uh, I hope that you can trust our body to make an informed decision, and, and I'm trusting that I know, um, that those in the city of STEM, uh, I don't think they're vile people, and that they're people that think that, that what they want to do is the right thing. Just as I have people shaking their head at me going like, oh, wow, oh, no. That's the way it is. You can shake it on. Uh, it's about being fair to people and being honest with people and telling people, hopefully that you'll make the right decision. This board will come to conclusion, and at some point, the city of STEM will bring that to our board. And when they bring it to our board, we'll make that decision, we hope. Uh, this board has no duty to act on that decision. That's something I want you to know. There's not been an ETJ expansion in this county in twenty-five years. So simply because it comes for our board doesn't mean this board has to act upon it. And so that's another thing that likely many people don't know. And so, um, I hope this board will do a deliberative process, and if, uh, something that be very, uh, informative and, uh, and, and fact-based, at the same time, cannot ignore the, the compassion and the, uh, passion of people, uh, that are presenting something that, uh, they adamantly don't want. And I'll sum it up like this. I, there was a town hall meeting here, uh, myself, Commissioner, um, Henman, and Commissioner Gooch were at the meeting, and I asked a question. I said, if everything in the zoning and the land use ordinance was the same as the county across the board, would you want an ETJ? And the audience was resounding, no. And so it's clear that the residents, uh, within the proposed ETJ, ETJ, simply do not want any part of the ETJ. And so, uh, that message is heard and received. I would not draw any conclusion to what I'm saying as far as what, how I decide to vote, but I can assure you, I, one of the things I believe in is that everyone needs to be represented. And I believe strongly in property rights and the rights of people. So with that being said, uh, finally, we are, um, we're going to have this place wired up and, and so we can have some meetings, and so you may not have to come. We want you to come, but, so you can maybe watch them later, or, uh, real time. But we hope that the board will approve that action when it takes place. I know that we have done all the things that we need to do, correct, to get it moving, and so that's good. And finally, on the opioid, uh, crisis, uh, on a personal note, I just had a nephew who is a, a Marine. Uh, he was shot and wounded, uh, he lost his right hip, and after he was shot and wounded in Afghanistan, he came home. And he came home in two thousand and eleven. And by two thousand and twelve, he's addicted to opioids. And by two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen, his life was an utter disaster. And as decorated a Marine that he was, and as good a man as he was, it nearly cost him his family and everything about. Been divorced, unemployed, put in jail, put in prison. What I'm saying for the God this last week, he completed a program that, out of a, and, uh, we hope that his life will be forever different. Um, my point to you is, is that, uh, opioid addiction affects every family. One out of four North Carolina families will have direct interaction with this crisis. It's real stuff. So, uh, with that said, um, I make a motion, um, oh, one last thing, sorry. That was my nephew that was, that was killing, that was, uh, murdered in Afghanistan. He just got through his treatment, uh, recently, and he is fine. The gentleman that just graduated from the program was my, his brother. And his brother just graduated from the program. I'm sorry for messing that up. The fact of the matter is, it's two siblings. They're greatly impacted by this, this plague. And so as for prayers for those young men, they're good men. And he just had some failings, and this, this drug got a hold of him, and it controlled them. Someone who's worked in law, unfortunately, for thirty-two years, I can tell you, I've seen about all you can see, and I've never seen anything quite as possessive as the opioid addiction. Um, and finally, um, Ms. Hayes will be joining me with the VIA task force, and we'll be looking at ways in which we can work with VIA and the Grandville County Public Schools, and actually with state legislatures, in developing a task force that will particularly look at individual education plans and intellectual disabilities, uh, developmental disabilities. We have a slew of children out there that were left behind during COVID, in which their individual education plans were not being met. And so now they got two years plus to make up. And so on top of that, we have children who have intellectual, um, developmental disabilities. They're struggling. They got left behind, too. We have all the conveyances and all the pieces out there, but nothing that connects all them together to bring a complete package to help these children get what they need. And often, these kids come from families that can't afford to pay for the private education and the other things that they, they, they grossly need. And it is hopeful through this, uh, effort that we can bring about some type of legislation and some type of change, uh, that ensures that these children are getting the, uh, help and the assistance that they need. So on my, on, on behalf of Grandville County Commissioners, I want to thank you for allowing me to serve on the VIA board, and thank Ms. Hayes for agreeing to work with us on this, and I think that we'll make great progress. Um, and finally, uh, we did have a discussion with, um, Certain, um, excuse me, Altech, and we're really hoping that, uh, we can move some progress further on more, a robust, uh, CTE program, uh, out of Altech, uh, and similar, something similar to what Surrey County is doing. And again, uh, giving children an opportunity to learn, trade in high school, and foster that, uh, relationship with that business so that when they graduate, uh, they are ready to go to work. Not every child is designed to go to college, nor should they, and every child should have the opportunity, but not every child actually may want, not want to, or they're just not designed to do that. We need to provide them those opportunities, and I think we're doing that, and we're trying to raise the game with that. So in adding closing, I need a motion that we are going to close, um, excuse me, let me read this comment here. It will be closed as allowed by GS one forty-three dash three eighteen point one one, A six personnel to consider the qualification, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee or prospective public officer employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee. I need a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make that motion if we can have a bio break.
Ms. Henman, I want to take a fifteen minute bio break, and do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Cozart. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.